All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to get started. This is the Monday, April 10th, meeting of the Select Board. And I will just introduce who I have with me. I am Erin Underhill, and I am the Chair. We have Craig Schultz, our Vice Chair, Ellen Rosenfeld, our Clerk, Karen Bure DeMarzo, our Assistant Town Administrator and HR Manager, as well as Mike Gazinski, our Town Administrator. We have a relatively light agenda this evening, but we will be taking some public comment tonight on the Select Board budget recommendations. So when we get to that, I will let you all know, and we will... You can be heard. So the first thing we have are some announcements. The annual town meeting is going to be Wednesday, May 3rd, at 7:30 PM in the middle-high school auditorium. So please mark your calendars and make every effort to attend. We also have town election coming up on May 8th. I'm just going to say what positions are up for election. We have the moderator, the town clerk, a seat for the Select Board, two seats for the school committee, the Board of Health, the library trustee, planning board, and two seats for constable. So that's coming up on Monday, May 8th, is the town elections. So moving into our agenda, the first thing we have is the approval of a ferry house exhibit. The Millis Girl Scouts last year did a little ferry house exhibit where the different troops and the girls would put together little ferry houses, and it was adorable. And it was on the front lawn of the town hall, and people could go take a look. And if you felt so inclined, you could also bring a non-perishable item for the food pantry. So they are requesting to do this again. And this would be dropped off on May 20th, with pickup of the houses being May 27th. So they are looking for permission to do this event again.
I'll make a motion to allow the ferry houses to be displayed from May 20th to May 27th.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ferry house exhibit from May 20th to May 27th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. So the next thing...
Come on out, don't be afraid.
Fun, fun, fun budget.
Yay!
All right.
Yeah, exactly.
So the next thing we have is the approval of the town carnival. Very exciting.
Very exciting. Can't wait. Yay! There you go. Yeah, all right, look at it. Hi, good evening. Chris Fogarty, Millis Recreation. After several years, I think the last time that the carnival was here was in 2017, so...
Wow.
Well, yeah, well, with the school project, and then COVID and all that, we decided we were going to reach out and have them come on back this year with your approval. The dates are June 23rd through the 25th. They do come in about a week beforehand, start kind of bringing a few items before that. So we've been in touch with the police, the fire, the school, and DPW, as well as baseball and softball, just to make sure that there's no conflicts. So also, speaking with the building commissioner, just to double-check, on the waiver for the plumbing and electrical fees, I do have everything filled out, but not submitted yet, just in case there was any questions for the plumbing and electrical fees. So with your permission, we'd love to have the carnival back with Finelli Amusements.
So, Madam Chair, you're just being voting to waive the permit fee itself, but the actual inspector's fees still get paid?
Okay, the permit fee, yes.
So it's just the permit fee, but just...
Okay. All right, so the request on the table is to approve the carnival from June 23rd through the 25th and waive the plumbing and electrical permit fees.
I'll make a motion to authorize the carnival for June 23rd through the 25th, with setup beginning in June 19th, it looks like, and waive the permit fees for plumbing and electric.
Thank you. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the town carnival from June 23rd through the 25th and to waive the plumbing and electrical permit fees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Time out.
Time out.
You were so excited last week to make this motion. You don't have that enthusiasm tonight. I'm like, "Blaine, why?"
I had a finance committee today at noon at work, a board meeting today at five at work, and I'm fighting a cold.
I'm just checking.
I'm here. Let's just take the fact that I'm here.
Thank you.
I'll be excited for him. How's that?
Thank you.
I'll try to amp it up for Project Smile.
Okay.
All right, so the next thing we have is establishing a gift fund for Project Smile.
Okay. Just back up two seconds.
Yeah.
If there's anybody out there that wants to volunteer to sell tickets in the booth, it is air-conditioned, and it's actually very fun. So please contact the Millis Rec Department, and we will assign you an hour slot or two-hour slots. But thank you. Okay. Moving on to Project Smile. This request is to set up a gift fund for donations in honor of Project Smile, which is... It's Project Smile 2.0. As you know, back in 2020, we did the murals around town in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month, which is May. So we would like to do that once again. And we did receive a check from Needham Bank. Thank you very much for your donation. We just would like to set up a gift fund so that we can go ahead and start purchasing any materials or contracts or whatever comes along with it. We have a lot of stuff lined up, so that we can do that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, enthusiastically make a motion, to open a gift fund for Project Smile with the Rec Department.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize and open a gift fund for the Recreation Department for Project Smile. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Just one question. So how, once that gets set up, how would people contribute?
Oh, for Project Smile?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, yes. We would love any additional donations. They can send a check into the Millis Recreation Department or the Town of Millis. Just make sure you put in the memo for Project Smile. And that way, we can, you know, we're looking to do maybe one mural, but we have several other programs or, you know, ideas set forth.
Okay, so will you have something maybe on your webpage?
Yes, yes. We were just waiting for approval before we put any out there. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy.
All right, the next thing we have is the approval of the Microsoft License Agreement for fiscal year '24.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet is a memo from Jim Donovan, the Director of IT at Millis, requesting that the Board authorize me to sign a contract with SHI International for Microsoft licensing in the amount of $23,823.86. We do currently have Microsoft software, and this will simply maintain our licensing with them. We do procure it through sub-companies of Microsoft. So just a request for the Board to authorize me to approve that contract, and we can go ahead and renew those services.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign a contract with SHI International for Microsoft licensing for $23,823.86.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the Town Administrator to sign a contract with SHI International for Microsoft licensing in the amount of $23,823.86. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Is that for one year, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. So the next thing we have on our agenda is the discussion of the fiscal year '24 Select Board budget recommendation with public comment. So first, we'll have a short discussion period, and then we'll open it up to public comment. I think I'm also going to ask to keep comments to around three minutes or so, but we'll be answering questions if there's any questions as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet is the updated budget, based on the Board's votes at your last meeting. There really is one, only one budget issue I wanted to bring up for this evening in relation to the Council on Aging budget. I've had some discussions with members of the council and some of the folks, some of the administrative staff in regards to this. And one of the things that's being considered, instead of adding hours directly to the Director, the outreach worker, and the dispatch for next year, is to look at consolidating the outreach worker position with, in the role of Program Operations Manager for the department, and to bring that position to 35 and a half hours per week. It's approximately the same cost as the increase in hours. So, and there are some benefits to that, in that you'd have actually two full-time staff being able to manage the department, both the Director and a program manager and outreach worker. And again, it would be cost-neutral from what you, basically from what you approved at your last meeting. Didn't know if there were any comments or thoughts in regards to that change. As the Board is aware, the current Director is retiring at the end of this month. And, you know, there'll be some change down there. And this is one way to look up, look at, really, beefing up the services down in the senior center and hopefully improving the offerings in other services there.
My only question with it was, by increasing the hours on the Director, I was hoping to make it more attractive to bring somebody in. Do they think they'll have any problem with... How many hours is the Director?
It's 35.5. So, I mean, it's fairly close to 40. Certainly, I think we'd want to keep that door open, you know, for, you know, down the road, if you made this change. But again, without knowing exactly what candidates were going to get, it's certainly something that we could discuss with candidates. And if that were, was an issue, we could talk about looking to expand that in the future.
I think that one of the major concerns was that, that the Director would be the, this new Director, would be the only full-time person. And that that may be, the optics of that may not be great for hiring.
Yeah, and I'm willing to do whichever makes it easiest to hire the right Director.
Right.
I just didn't know which solution would make that the easiest.
Yeah, I had the same thoughts.
Yes. So as long as the money doesn't change, this was brought forward by the COA in thinking about it more. And for the current staffing, I think that it works.
Okay, that's all.
So if the Board is supportive of that, I can work with the Finance Director to make those adjustments to the budget before it's sent to the Finance Committee for their meeting on Wednesday. And again, it's pretty much cost-neutral. I think there's about an increase of about $1,400, which I've already spoken with the Finance Director about, and we can, we can make some adjustments and make that happen.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion with the Board on the budget prior to opening it up for comment?
Nope.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Joyce Boyardi, 206 Orchard Street. Will this change the newly hired position of 18 hours? Was there not somebody that was just recently for, for spreadsheets and data entry?
No, that won't, that will not have any impact.
So that person will still have their job?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that that didn't eliminate that by, by bringing in the two full-times.
Right, no, no impact on that position.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are open for any comments
Hi, Lauren Barnes, Curve Street. Quick question, and then maybe a more complicated one. Quick question was on DPW snow and ice budget. The obvious question is whether or not there's more of an opportunity to save, particularly on the expense line going into next year, because we obviously didn't use all of the materials, where we had a pretty mild winter this year. And I didn't see it reflected on the budget here.
I can take what we typically say on that. Snow and ice is budget, we always under-budget, not this year, but typically under-budget, because once you've increased snow and ice, that's my understanding, you can never go backwards on it. So if you set it at X, you can never go below X. We keep it low, hope for a good winter, and then fund it in the fall. At the Fall Town Meeting, we have two different...
Right, so generally, we never decrease snow and ice. And when we increase it, we increase it in a very moderate way, because once it is increased, we can never decrease it. So even though we've had a pretty good year from that perspective, based on those constraints that the state puts upon us, I would recommend that we maintain at the current level.
Actually, could, would we even be allowed to decrease it?
If you decrease it, then you can no longer spend in deficit on it. So I would certainly not recommend a decrease.
Is there a way to show some sort of asterisk that says, "I know, by the way, yes, we do have an inventory of supplies," or something? Because I think I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one who's going to ask that type of question, though.
Well, it's something that the Finance Committee, if they wanted to, could put in their flyer, if they wanted to note that. But again, it would certainly, you know, the fact that we've had a lighter year will have, will assist the DPW next year in that we're not going to have to spend quite as much... I mean, I'd have to speak with the Director to see what that amount would be, to fill the salt and sand sheds for next year. It certainly, it's a savings that will kind of go into next year because of the materials we don't have to purchase. But certainly, I would probably defer to the Finance Committee if they wanted to make note of that in their report.
Just trying to eke out some good news here.
Yeah.
The obvious question, I think, is I'm looking at the fine print on the schools that shows a 2.2% positive variance overall. And then there's a detail sheet. I can't tell you what page it is because I don't think the pages are numbered, but it's just a shorter FY '24 funding proposal. And I'm just wondering if somebody can kind of connect the dots between the 2.2% increase and what we've heard up to this point to include where we land with respect to staffing impacts and services impacts and student experience impacts with the budget that we're looking at. It's this smaller sheet here. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I can try to go through that, and certainly I would ask the Finance Director to correct me if I veer off course on any of it. But the base budget, as you, as you note, is a total increase of 6%. So the, their current base budget is $18,154,955. 6% increase in base reflects an increase of $1,089,297 for an FY '24 school base budget Then if you, if you add in the Marijuana Impact Funds, that's an additional $51,774 for an increase in the school general fund budget of $19 million, or total general fund school budget of $19,296,026. The two other, the other items that you noted are actually within an article in the town meeting warrant. And that would be an infusion of additional funds into the school budget or supplemental school funding amount of, from free cash of $538,697, and from stabilization, $400,000. For an additional school funding of $938,697 for a total FY '24 school funding proposal of $20,234,723. So that makes up the total breakdown of what's on the, on the table for town meeting at this point.
And with this plan, Craig, this, what this means with the potential reductions in staff, right? Is this something we can speak to, or...?
Yeah, I can tell you what has been presented repeatedly each of the meetings. And one of the other reasons is the 23 adopted budget shows all the HCA funds, and those are only partially in for this year. I've finally gotten used to it, Carol, thanks. So it's essentially got partially HCA, and there'll be additional funds coming in in the Fall Town Meeting potentially for that. But the school budget was about $1.8 million short. We were told this back in, I believe that was February we got the 1.8. In December, we had $1.3 million on the table that was being short. So by increasing, so trying to make up a delta of 1.8 million, increasing the base from 4% to 6% moves us $363,000 closer. HCA funds of $51,000 come in. That leaves us a budget deficit at that point, just through normal budgetary, normal operating budgetary increases. The delta would be $1,386,000. There will take $538,000 of free cash in one article that's being proposed. And that drops the delta to $848,000. And then stabilization using another $400,000 in a second article. That would move the $448,000 of deficit remaining. And that's where the school would implement, I think they said seven and a half, seven, seven and a half FTEs. And that's how they'd close the full gap at that point. Each of those three pieces is funded slightly differently. The 6% is a permanent increase to the school base. The free cash is a one-time impact, using available free cash that comes in. And the stabilization is a one-time increase, or funding increase, and that takes a 2/3 majority and has to be paid back. So it's really three different ways of funding it. First is normal budgetary growth, normal process budgetary growth, free cash, which is one-time funds, and stabilization funds, which need to be paid back within three years to the town. So that is the plan, and then the cuts are the final step.
And just to, just to make sure it's clear, everything is growing by 6%. The town, the municipal side budget, as well as the school side budget. So it's, it's not that the school is growing by 6%. The, across the board, the budgets are growing by 6% this year. Next year, we are predicting them to go back to 4%. But the 6%, the difference between the 4% and 6% will be absorbed into the budgets moving forward.
Yeah, and just to be clear, and Erin said, there's no municipal cuts. There've been people saying we're cutting municipal services to do this. There's not a cut on the municipal side anywhere. In fact, there's an increase of 2% over typical-year fundings on the municipal side. But we're not sacrificing capital projects. We funded almost every capital project that came under the Capital Planning Committee. Because Carol is very creative and found other alternative sources to use. So that freed up our free cash. We sent letters to the state legislature hoping that they'll kick in money to help solve the problem. And the idea behind that is that's first dollar in from the state that goes towards SED, goes to replenish stabilization, because that is, you know, that was our large item that we pulled out that was out of the ordinary. We've not done that before, often for budget items. Quite often for snow and ice, but not for many operating budget items. And so we've sent letters to the legislature asking for more funding. That money will go into stabilization when it comes in, if it comes in. And the school, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee, I think we've all acknowledged, this is a one-time solution. The school's not expecting this to occur again. They're, they're, I'm speaking for them, but this is everything they've said in public meetings. So it's nothing that's different there. They're thankful that we're able to do it one year, but this is not a one, more than a one-year expectation on their part. And the last piece is, we're doing it because we don't see an option. Honestly, we don't see another way to get there. So that's, that's it on the school funding side that I have. Madam Chair?
Yes.
My name's Pete Berube. I'm on the Finance Committee. I live at Eight Rose Road. And I would just urge us all to be very clear when we choose our words, not to correct you, Craig, but it's a one-time funding solution. It's not a one-time budgetary issue for everybody that's listening and sees this. We anticipate this will be a problem next year. We'll have time to deal with it next year. And there will likely be different solutions on the table for next year. No one knows exactly what's going to happen next year, but I think we all anticipate that there will be budget shortfalls in future years. And the solution that is being talked about is a one-time option that we're pursuing. Next year is a whole other discussion, a whole other vote that would be required by the town meeting.
Yeah, I want, thank you for pointing that out. This is a, the solution we're proposing is one-time. We will not be revisiting stabilization again. I don't see how we possibly could. There's a finite amount we can put, use from stabilization, so that, we can't go back to that wall again. So the solution is for next year only. The, the problem is systemic. It's the growth in uncontrollable costs that aren't part of what our school district does. School district grows around 4% each year. It's the, from typical operations. It is the outside impact of special education. And my wife is a special ed teacher. My kids benefited from the programs. No criticism of those programs. But it's important that we call out what the issue is. The state does not provide adequate funding to meet the level of services that are expected to be delivered.
So if you could just introduce yourself and where you live?
Sure. Evening. John Sussman at 34 Beach Street, recent addition to the town in your little community there. By the way, you didn't stop by and have a cup of coffee with me when we moved in, so please, Ellen, make sure you swing by soon. That's my wife, Rose, there. She'd love to meet you also. Anyway, I'm brand-new, and I'm not going to be the guy that monopolizes lots of time having just moved into the town. I just had a couple of things I noticed. On the topic of the school front, I had two brief questions, which don't need to be answered, but hopefully considered, which is one, what does, question one is, what does that look like? What is this, this solution look like on, on our tax bills? Second question, are we pursuing aggressively alternate methods to start bringing in that money? And I'm glad Pete took a moment to get up and both clarify and also pose, I think, the question of, is, are there aggressive methods being taken to find alternate sources of revenue in order to mitigate the cost and sort of back that up? And again, this doesn't necessarily need an answer, though I welcome one. It's, it's more food for thought. And then I had a couple of follow-ups, but...
I'll take the first part. I don't know if you've lived in Massachusetts, if you've been involved in towns. Proposition two and a half will only allow tax rates to increase with a voter, with voter input. It takes a 50% vote and a 66% vote at town meeting. This will not change the tax rate in town or the tax collection in town, what we're proposing right now. Longer term, it's either going to have to be the state redoes its funding mechanism, or there will have to be some permanent funding mechanism put in place. And I'll leave it to the schools to discuss that. But it could very well be that at that point, they decide, the town decides that we have to look at alternatives that may increase taxes. But this solution will not increase taxes, and it will buy us enough time to figure out what happens next.
Understood. And i- if, I, I look forward to chatting with, you know, members of the Finance Committee. I've, I volunteered for a few committees, including Finance, and I hope I can contribute in some way to that, finding that solution. The two other things I noticed were the fire department and veterans. I'm a veteran myself, so it struck me that it looked like their budget was about being cut in half. I'm certain the fire department more than earns any increase that they get. I'm just curious, it was considerable. Curious what the purpose of that, I think it was about 500-plus.
Yeah. You want to speak to that, or? It's up to you.
Whatever you're most comfortable.
As far as the fire department is concerned, we did bring on four additional firefighters about three years ago. Those were part of a federal grant to bring on appropriate staffing. And up until this point, the federal government has been paying virtually all of the costs related to the firefighters. That grant is ending. That's the bad news. The good news is that the, the costs are not being shifted onto the taxpayers, they're being shifted to being paid from the ambulance receipts. So we do bill for, for ambulance services, and the, there has been a plan in place, and the fire department has been pooling up those funds, you know, during the time that the federal government's been paying through that grant, paying for these firefighters. So now it's being switched to that different funding source, the, the ambulance receipts.
Understood, thank you. Should I be concerned there's that many ambulances called around here?
There are a lot of ambulance calls. I mean, certainly I can put you in touch with the fire chief if you would like to chat with him about it.
The higher level certification they get, that allows us to charge more for the ambulance runs.
I see.
So it, that was part of the plan when the previous select board put that, accepted the grant, knowing that we'd have to absorb it at this point.
Understood.
But the plan has been in place all along, we're waiting for it to bubble in.
Right. And your question...
We have full-on paramedics.
Yeah.
We moved to having full-on paramedics as opposed to just basic life support, which is really, which is a great thing for us.
We have the highest level of paramedic service that's offered. So you had a question as well about the veterans' services budget going down. It's actually also good news. Our veterans' service agent's been with us for a few years, and he's managed to be able to switch over a lot of the benefits from local to federal. So he's found ways for, for the veterans to be able to access directly funds from the federal government rather than through the town. So we're not cutting benefits off to anyone.
Understood.
This is a shifting of the payment from the town to the federal veterans' program, so...
That is good news, thank you. That's all I have, thanks.
Awesome, thank you.
Pleasure to meet everybody.
Thank you.
Welcome to Milis.
Jim Duffy, Exchange Street. So funny.
What would be a meeting without Jim Duffy from Exchange Street getting up to the podium?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
Awesome! It's awesome!
All right, I'll try not to be the wet blanket, I usually am.
You can be a wet blanket.
So, along those lines, so this is my kind of second iteration of going through this. The frustration is, there's no narrative around the budgets. Just like we just heard, would be very nice to have that narrative handed out as part of the rationalization for all of these things. I don't know what, you know, the 6% rationalization, why did we decide to do that, would be nice to know. Certainly the schools, I understand the issue there. I don't personally, and I think others might also share this opinion, I don't like the fact we're locked into 6% or inflation every year automatically. I'd like to see us say, here's 2.5%, and here's some other percent. My, one of the question, there's a question in here somewhere, and that is, what do the townspeople do if they don't agree with 6%? Do we have to vote down the whole budget? Can we, is there pieces of the budget? It's not pieces, right, so...
The whole budget, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, right? Which nobody wants to happen. On the other hand, what choice are the townspeople given to say, "We elect to hold down spending to certain levels, and how do we do that," right?
We'd have to amend the lines that we'd like to see amended, and that was attempted before. So if you can pick the areas where you think the growth shouldn't be, and, and we've gone over this, and that, I knew the answer to those other questions, because we've had these conversations time and time and time again. So if there's a narrative, and maybe it's all in my head, but it's, it's there, and we can write it up, something, I agree, there should be some, we could do bullet points in five or six of these and probably answer half the questions.
The, the Finance Chair was asking a question last week to Mr. Kozinski. He was given the rationale behind it. It's sort of like, if we have the narrative, you don't have to ask the question, and I think it saves everyone time.
But I think that honestly, looking at contractual increases in the town and the school, and looking at the, some of the changes we're making, the enterprise fund, that's about 60,000 or 70,000 dollars on this, what is the school 2% equal? It's about 150, 180?
2% on the school?
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm not school, the town, municipal.
It's about 180?
Yeah.
180,000?
So it's growing 180 more than the 4% we typically would do, and we just came out of the contract cycle.
But we're stuck with it. That's...
No.
It'll move, it'll move the base up for next year, but then it'll grow by 4% next year, but that, that's the reason we have the ability to change it each year, but yeah.
But, but it's baked in. I mean, once you make that step, there's no going back. And I don't have an answer to how you do it, but, you know, they get 6% this year, and...
Well, it's not that they're getting 6%. I mean, the municipal funds are going to, the cost is going to increase 6%.
Understand.
6%. 60,000 dollars of that is offsetting the enterprise. We could say, keep the rate pairs, you know, in the enterprise funds, but don't correct that problem that we, that problem, the funding issue we, we noticed. Well, I didn't, anyway.
It's fine.
And that would save 60, so we could reduce it by 60 there, and that's half a percent.
Yeah.
But, but that's not solving the problem, that's shifting money. Any other reduction is going to be reducing on the staff side, or, well, I'm going to say staff side, because I don't know that we have a lot of other items there that are inflationary growing, but growth.
Variety at Skelegen Park, so...
But, but, so that would be the solution. Yes, the process is to propose cutting, and I'll, I won't even make a hypothetical there.
Understand. So, so...
You know what it is.
The citizens got to get up and say, "I don't like this," or, "We reduce this line item, that line item, the other item."
Yes.
Or we can...
That's the process.
Or we can ask Mr. Berube to re, ask to refer, and we could be there all night.
We will, I will resign as another motion to defer on the warrant.
I had to throw that out there.
I'll be sick that night.
There's some discussion of 65, 35 budget ratio in the past. Is that out the window?
That went away with the 4%. That went away with the 4%. This, it used to be that 65% of any new growth went to the schools. And 35% went to the town. And when you had new growth totaling 1 million, 2 million, 3 million excess growth, that was a crazy formula to use.
Sure, all right.
You want to talk about uncontrollable growth.
Right.
Yep, okay.
On the other side, that was touch and put administered the same way, when there were cuts to be made, because there were a lot of years where we did make cuts.
In the budget sheets, the TA blue column, is that just increase of 2%? Or would it, I don't know the justification or rationalization on the, very far right says TA adjustments of some numbers there. Yeah, those are, those are my recommendations of the budget. Within the 6%? Of the, yeah, they are... Does that essentially get you to 6%? If you total them up, they're within the 6%.
That gets you to the 6%.
Yeah, okay. I have a couple of questions related to warrant articles, which are separate from budget. Do we wait for that, or do we want...
We can do that if the warrant articles, right?
Yeah, if you'd like.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll do that when we do the warrant articles next.
Yeah, okay. So just for future planning, water treatment plant, we're going to end up getting asked to get funded next year?
I'm not sure.
We have a design, right?
I don't know when it's going to come on, but...
Well, there's one getting built, and then there's another one that's in the works, right? There's one that, that the design would be happening if those funds are approved at this town meeting. In theory, we have to build it next year. Yeah, it, it, you know, depends on how long it takes to design, but yeah. It could, it could be on the warrant as early as this time next year. Okay. Assuming that, when will it hit the tax bill? After it's built?
Usually lags about two years.
Two years.
It takes about a year to build it, then another year and a year and a half to bond it.
All right. High school...
But that would go on the water enterprise fund bill, yeah.
Understood, yeah. Yep. Tri-county high school.
That's really complicated.
Yeah, we don't have any answer to that.
But it's, you know, we have all of these, you know, we have all these things coming at us, but yet we're not necessarily reducing budgets or anything to kind of buffer those impacts. And there's no big debts going off until another 10 years, right?
Let me explain that as soon as we get, yeah.
Yeah, I'm over the last three minutes.
That's okay, you've asked a series of questions, we're going to send you away. I'll go to this one, and then we'll go through it, and maybe you'll sit down for a bit and take a break.
When's it going to hit? This is a question, right?
That's complicated. In October, okay, Tri-county... May I digress for a moment, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may digress.
Thank you. It's a long story. 1970s, people decided to build VOTEC high schools, so I went way back there, maybe 60s.
I know, really? Should we go back to the Cape?
We have to go back to that. That's pre-prop 2.5.
I was getting out of high school back then, so careful there.
Yeah, the, that was pre-prop 2.5. So the state put in a very progressive law that said, if every town in the area votes to do something, capital projects for the school, every town votes, and it's a majority of voters, it's not a majority of towns. So if Milis casts 100 votes yes, and somebody else casts 5,000 votes no, they win. It's not a majority by town, it's the total count of voters. That allows them to do the construction. That doesn't authorize borrowing, that doesn't authorize bonding. All that does is authorize them to go ahead and build it and hand us a bill when we're done. Then it's up to the town to decide how we're paying for it. And it's not even a bill, like the high school, when it's done, we'll go to the Clyde Brown School. We knew how much that was going to cost from the beginning. We knew how much it was going to hit each household. Actually, we didn't, because we came in 2 million short, but favorable.
Worst case scenario.
Not short. Favorable. Below budget. We came in 2 million below budget.
Worst case scenario.
Worst case scenario, they come in with a number, it's going to cost them 210 million, 208 million is what they're saying?
280. 280, I heard. And only, and only 25% reimbursement.
Right. I was doing after the reimbursement.
Someone was going to question that.
Yeah, we have, we have questioned that to no end. But so anyway, so it's going to be a couple hundred million dollars. It's based on your enrollment at the school. So one year it might cost you 400,000 dollars, the next year might cost you 1 million dollars. And that's how the towns are funding.
Towards the school build?
Yes.
And, but that rolls into your per capita, per student.
Okay.
So they count how many kids go. So there was no thought for prop 2.5, you know, so, and, and you have to run an election that's at least four hours, but not more than eight hours, is the way the law was written. I don't know if that's changed.
So October 24th will be the election for the school.
For that school?
Yes.
And every other town involved will have their election.
Same date, same times.
And if the majority of the people that sends kids there opt for this 200 million-plus project, it will be built. They will send us an invoice for our portion based on kids, and we'll have no say on that except ask for an override. If other towns agree that this might be extravagant, they could have built a smaller school with a higher reimbursement rate, then, then they can come back from the draw, come back to the drawing board.
Back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
Right.
Because there needs to be something done, absolutely. It doesn't have to be the top end, top, top end.
Right, we don't need the catalog. But from a, hit our tax bill perspective, four years, five years?
Well, there's probably eight to eight years.
Eight years?
Yeah.
I'll be gone by then, all right.
It may not even hit the tax bills. You may get your wish, because if it doesn't go into the tax bill, we may have to gut 400,000 to 1 million out of operation funds. Because it's not that we have to do an override to fund it, we just have to fund it.
Yeah, I understand.
They don't care how we get there, which is crazy.
Right. So it'll be down to one person in a department.
Yeah, yeah.
Joyce Boyardi, 206 Orchard. Can the town decide not to be part of Tri-County if this, I mean...
Nope.
No.
A chip is sailed.
And why is that? Why can't the town...
It would, it would be a very, if I may...
Go ahead.
It would be a very complex process to, in order to extricate the town from the district. And in actuality, there may be other costs involved with that that are unpredictable and may even cost the town more, because after that, then every student we send to evoke tech would be an out-of-district placement. That would be a lot more expensive than what we're paying now. That's one problem. Not even to mention the fact that I think it would require the other towns in the district to allow the town to leave it, as well as legislative action that would be needed. It wasn't set up for easy dissolution.
So we have to be part of this, whether we've got, so if we had three students going, we'd still have to be part of this?
Yes.
Yes. Well, Sherborne, I think, only has one or none.
They have Sherborne.
So they're, Sherborne, they're one.
They have one.
So, so if Sherborne only has one, then they only, if the building, if it does go through, they only have to pay their little ti...
Well, they, there's a minimum of five.
Five.
So they have to, whether they have one, zero, or five, they have to pay for at least five.
I don't think...
But it will vary by year.
Every year, that'll switch, depending on the enrollment of every town.
I don't think we should lose sight of the value of this school, just because it's been 50 years and they need to replace it.
No, I'm just asking, because there are, I understand the school is excellent.
Next time you call, they'll get your sink drip filled, it coming from...
No, I understand that it's an excellent school. I just wondered if, if it was, if the town opted not to be a participant, if that was avail, if that option was available. I know it's a phenomenal school.
Yeah.
But 289 million dollars is almost 300 million dollars, so that's a lot of money with all the other expenses that we have.
A lot of leaky faucets.
Lot of leaky faucets. All right, thank you.
Hi, Pete Berube, Eight Rose Road. I'm also the Chair of the Finance Committee, and very quickly, it is the duty of the Finance Committee to provide the narrative that Mr. Duffy is providing. And that will be in the front several pages of the Finance Committee report, which will come out in mailboxes roughly, give or take, sorry, it goes to the printer on the April, on April 17th. It will be in mailboxes, obviously prior to town meeting, so about another week after that, around the 24th of April. So a great way to learn about what's going to happen at town meeting will be all of the articles synopsized, all of the articles in the warrant, and the synopsis up front, or the introduction up front that the Finance Committee will write, so...
Thank you.
Please look forward, yeah.
Kathy McKenna, 78 Island Road. I was wondering for Wednesday's meeting, Miss Madam Chair, if we could have the line items in the packet, this, each line to see where, what's going, what's, you know what I'm talking about. I don't know what it's formally called. The detail.
The departmental detail?
Yes, please.
I think so.
Is that ready?
Carol, that's something that could be pulled together and updated. Any updates to that?
Carol Johnston, Finance Director. I can have it in a PDF form and sent over to the Finance Chair, and he can disseminate it to his board, as well as copy the Select Board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Also, I just want to comment about the HCA funds, and I'm wondering if, just, if you would think about the social worker for the town and getting rid of that this year, and putting that money towards the senior center for one year to take care of that, because I just don't see where next year, the police department wanting two extra policemen would also ask for this to be on their staff. And if you've got 70,000 dollars, and some of it could be towards the hours for the new, and the Council on Aging has had meetings from cannabis companies come to them, so there is a, an avenue to use money for the senior center, for this money. And at some point, these are going to all have to disappear, and it would just make sense to maybe start now doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Kathy, do you mean the social worker? Do you mean the school resource officer?
No, there's a social worker services for the entire community. And, um, I'm confused by that, because I was at a, um, senior center meeting, uh, Council on Aging last year. And the woman there represented that they don't use it. They have their own or something. I, uh, maybe someone could correct that. But, uh, it seems like-
Yes.
Police were using it before it came and it's a great aid, but it's not here anymore. So I can't see, as a finance person, I have a difficult time seeing how this is going to be absorbed in future budgets. This one, oh, wow. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. Loring Barnes, Curve Street. I'm possibly to the Finance Chair, but, um, to the board. I'm wondering how the town prioritizes the requirement to pay back the stabilization fund of four, to the $400,000, which I presume has some interest attached to this, versus OPEB, uh, other, uh, post-employment benefits. Because every year, I think we, we try and do something with that, but we don't do very much with it. And at some point, I feel like that day is gonna come to roost. And I'm wondering what the plans are for funding OPEB and how we balance, how we, how we assign priorities legally from a fiduciary standpoint to stabilization versus OPEB.
The stabilization fund is by statute, by our, not statute, but by our policy, has to be paid back in three years. So worst case, it would have to be paid back, well, worst case, it's paid back $400,000 in year three. But realistically, it would be 1.3333 million per year for three years. Or if any money comes in from, uh-
Not a million.
I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Shifted from a $40 million budget at work a few hours ago to this one, 133,000 and change per year for the next three years. And then, uh, and any state aid would come in, would go into that earlier and accelerate it. OPEB, what's our total OPEB liability?
Uh, it's a lot.
Like 20 million?
It's, yeah, it's, it's, yes. And, I mean, I would say that, and we did put funds into both OPEB and stabilization, I believe at the fall town meeting. Um, but I would say in this case that the stabilization refunding that would be the priority on the short term. I totally agree with you on the bigger picture with OPEB. It has to be addressed. But the stabilization, from the perspective of, um, you know, the town stability and it's, and how it's seen financially, the stabilization would be the most important thing to, uh, to repay within the next three years at most, and hopefully much less than that.
Yeah, and, um, and OPEB was funded, as Mike said, in November, as Town Minister said, November. So is stabilization. Um, and I'm quite honestly, short of, uh, a 16, 18, whatever, million-dollar, 20-million-dollar override, 50,000 here, even 400,000 there, doesn't get you very far on OPEB. Um, and there's one town in the state that's done anything. We should continue and will continue to put our token amount in each year that we have the funds available. But, uh, and our policy says if we don't fund stabilization, we fund OPEB. So there is, there are processes for that.
So are we anticipating that someday, somebody from the state is going to come down and say it's due? Or retirement exodus is gonna be such that we're gonna find out the hard way? And we're gonna have another big crisis on our hands?
If I may?
Yeah, please.
Sure.
I mean, I think this will be a gradual thing, as it has been. Um, obviously, I think the closest thing to compare this to would be the, um, the PER Act, the Retirement for Employees, municipal and state employees, which they've been working to fully fund that for a number of years. And they have another, I think, 10 to 15 years to go on that. This will be a similar thing, where it's gonna be, I think, a 30-to-50-year process. It's not gonna happen in the next five or 10 years. Um, I think as we wind down with fully funding the retirements, this will become a bigger issue. And those funds will now shift to pay these retirement benefits versus the actual retirement. Um, the good news is, we, we are in good company. The vast majority of towns and the Commonwealth are in a very similar situation to us. As Craig pointed out, there are a few towns that have passed overrides for the purposes of funding this, that have fully funded this. Um, I don't think that's an approach that the Board, uh, wants to take at this point. I think that it'll have to be addressed going forward. Um, but I think the, uh, the stabilization will be the short term and the OPEB will be a little bit of a longer-term um, thing that we're gonna have to deal with.
I just don't want to be caught by surprise on this one, because this is a 20-million-dollar surprise is a pretty big surprise. Um, question on the MSBA 1.3 million-dollar feasibility study. Um, we're dealing with a crisis. It's known statewide. The question I have, um, which you probably won't be able to answer, but I guess I would like to put it out for consideration, is whether or not we can slow that process. You probably can't answer it now. I understand the MSBA frameworks of you get in line, if you duck out a line, you've lost your place. But I think that the conditions are such that perhaps, um, that's really, those rules of engagement um, could be reconsidered on a statewide basis because of the situation that's beyond our control. When we all voted, um, for the feasibility study, all of this wasn't known. And it seems to me that we're, we're on a track for a project that we probably, that is probably ill-timed. So I guess I want to put out there that slowing down the process that, um, would be worth a community discussion and an official discussion. And the last thing I wanted to ask, was kind of asked, I think, by somebody, but I don't know that it was really explained, is, um, you indicated, Erin, that the 6% threshold raising the bu, the baseline of the budget is in its entirety. The question I have is why can't, since the, the crux of the problem is right here in the school budget, why can't the 6% increase be only raised where we have the major problem, which is on the school side? I think this would make that a lot more palatable for the community than simply to go across the board. Thank you.
If I may?
You may.
And I, and I think, again, Craig mentioned this a little bit earlier in the meeting, um, in regards to that, um, the approximately 180,000, that represents the additional 2%. Uh, about 60,000 of that represents, um, making adjustments within the Enterprise Funds and the General Fund um, to further correct, um, that imbalance. Uh, about 15,000 is going towards the, um, uh, senior center staffing issues. Uh, the remainder is really based on the fact that, um, the inflationary factors have really had a detrimental impact on the town's ability to maintain, um, all the expense lines within our budgets that have gone up dramatically because of the inflation. Um, we did just sign contracts with our, um, some of our biggest unions over the past year. And some, I believe, well-deserved, um, adjustments were given there, which, which did have some minor impact that, that affects this. Um, we have lost some employees over the past, um, six months to a year due to, you know, our ability to, to stay competitive in some areas of employment in the town. Um, those are really the factors. If we were to remove that 180,000, um, obviously, it would put some of those items in jeopardy. And we'd probably have to cut, um, some services or some staff. I mean, I couldn't, I wouldn't want to venture to say exactly what that would be. Um, but I think we have about a 1.4 million-dollar problem. And, um, again, 180,000 of that, and the town, the municipal side has stuck within the 4% for quite a number of years. So, um, these additional costs have been pent up, up over a number of years. So, um, that's really, that's my recommendation. It's up to the Board and the Finance Committee and the town meeting to make its call on whether they think that's sufficient or not, but that's the reasoning behind it.
Well, I'd like to just add one thing. So, the, this, this, this school v. town thing that you hear about all the time. The school gets everything, or the town gets everything, but, but, it's this whole pitting, which I hate, by the way, because there's really no truth to it. Um, but I don't want to start that. So the school is, was hit, you know, unexpectedly with this. And yes, we will do everything we can, but not, I've been saying this since I was running for this position, not to the detriment of the town. And last year, the school was given 361,000, I think. And it was to the detriment of the town. I mean, the, the COA came for their person, they didn't get, and things were put off in this building. And, um, it's, 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 it was always be something. There was always be something. And, and I think that, um, the, the, uh, the suggestion that we even it up, I think, was, was, was brilliant. And, and again, 180,000 on this side and 1.5 million on the other side, so that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Scott Fuzey, 411 Unit. I just wanted to discuss, um, what I previously spoke about, about the townwide social worker. The chief came in when he did his budget and I, you know, with mental illness-
Can't hear you on those, can't hear you.
The chief came in and did his budget and he mentioned how many mental illness calls, how many calls they've been on, and how, you know, the social worker has been an asset. Where he, they've had somebody at the station, they brought, he's had the call in the past for Bed or a facility, hasn't been successful. She's been successful. I would wait and see and let the chips fall, where they lie next year. I wouldn't make a change there until we know where we're at. I think that's an important asset to the department and the community. And I, and I think she's been very successful. So I, myself, would be against eliminating that altogether. I think it's, a lot of communities have picked it up. I, I believe it's even shared. I think we share it, so it's not. You know, that's an important, with mental illness up there, with, with people needing that service, this person, this social worker, is probably trained, you know, and works with the police and, and can work with them. And is a little bit more, is, is educated. So I think it's an important asset to, to hold on for a while. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Just another quick question on a feasibility study. Kathy McKinnis, again, 78 Island Road. How long is this feasibility, once it's signed, sealed, and delivered, how long is it good for?
For the school?
Which one you're talking about?
The school feasibility.
Uh, that might be your question for the school committee. I don't know that we have that answer.
I can tell you what the Clyde Brown was and how it works. It's the same process. I mean, the feasibility studies, the feasibility study as a feasibility study will tell us what the project is and can be pulled off the shelf at any time.
Anytime, okay, because-
But, but the important part is, the second part of that is, after you finish the, there's a window where you have to submit it to the, uh, Mass School Building Authority for funding consideration. That's a shorter window by far. So while, so if we don't get it done, if we pull it, we hold it, we get taken out of the queue, and we get back in the queue in five years, we hit the ground with a detailed feasibility study and probably can go much quicker. But, um, that's up, again, the school committee can answer that a little bit better. But there is definitely a window on it while it's good.
What if you, what if it had an expiration date, like, oh, all of, you know, seven or eight years and this doesn't go through?
Yeah.
Also, um, talking about having to increase salaries to keep people. I remember hearing that there were more than one person applied for the Finance Director's office job. So there's people out there looking for work at the existing salaries. And also, I caught wind over the weekend that, um, Charles River went up 11%. Have you heard that yet, Mr. Director?
Are you talking about the, um-
Assessment?
The assessment, yes, has, has gone up.
So that will be another burden, burden on the sewer users?
Yes, on the taxpayers, yes.
So once again, the sewer users are hit for things that, uh, a lot of people don't seem to care about. Thank you.
Jim Duffy, 343 Exchange. I'll make this quick, um, in deference to Mr. Barubi's comments. I appreciate it comes out, but it comes out at the end. And people having these discussions, trying to understand the rationale behind it, could really use that information at the front end of the process, not the end of the process, right?
Yeah.
Expenses have gone up for everyone. Taxpayers, right? So I understand expenses. I understand nobody wants to lose staff, but I'll give you my personal perspective. I consume what I consider to be very little town services. Certainly, TPW, I consume for sure. That's probably about it. I'm rarely here at the town hall. And quite honestly, if they weren't open on Fridays as a whole day, then it wouldn't bother me personally. I'm not sure who it might bother, but you're gonna have to look at hard facts of, you know, it's gonna be hard to maintain people. Maybe you don't replace people, for example. But, um, you know, the, it's a hard, it's a hard process, but the expenses have got to get reined in wherever possible.
Are there any other comments on the budget? Okay. All right, is there any action that you need from us on the budget at this time?
Um, only insofar as the, um, the Council on Aging. If there's any, um, questions on that, or if you would like the Finance Director and I to make any adjustments in the budget, in that budget, because currently it's based on the additional hours for the director and the outreach and the dispatch.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I can see it both ways, so I don't think I have a relatively strong opinion either way.
My only thought on it is whatever is the easiest way to attract a quality director. I mean, that's what I want to, and I'll defer to the Council on what they think is the best way to bring that person in, either more hours or the assistance. So I have no preference. I'm fine with the money going to them and trusting them to use it.
Yes, I'll just make a, a quick comment that we think that the-
Say who you are.
Elizabeth Derwin, and I live at 1606 Sixth Street.
And you're on the-
And I'm on the Council on Aging Board. That, um-
How are you feeling? You feeling okay?
I have no COVID symptoms at all. Um, to be able to come into a job knowing that there's another person there for the majority of the week is a very attractive thing, as opposed to having three part-time employees that you have to keep juggling. So there's, there's no ideal solution here, given the amount of funding that we have. So I think the difference is, do you give more hours to the director, so she's there 40, and the rest of the staff is there, smaller amounts than we're talking about now? Or do you at least have a secondary person that, you know, when that person's on vacation or out of the office or whatever, there is another full-time person there to, to run the operation? To think about having a full-time operation with only one full-time staff looks a, as a daunting task.
All right.
Again, as I said, I, I accept that. I believe that. I don't, I, I, thank you. Whatever they decided, I was comfortable with.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think that's appropriate, um, if the Board is comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Do you want to vote?
Um, just a quick vote to approve that one change to the Council on Aging budget. And the Finance Director and I will make those adjustments before it's sent to the Finance Committee tomorrow.
I'll make a motion to approve the Council on Aging budget changes as presented to, provide two full-time staff.
Second.
Moved and seconded to, um, adopt the Council on Aging budget changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing we have is to open the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll make a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open the annual town meeting warrant. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Well, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So all the updates have been made to the draft warrant since, um, your last meeting. All your decisions and votes have been included. Um, there is one item for the Board's consideration that I have brought up in, in my email to you. This is in regards to Article Four. That's the supplemental funding article. Um, there was some discussion at the last, uh, Finance Committee meeting that I intend, that I attended, um, that had asked if the Board had considered separating, uh, that item into two articles. One for the free cash and one for the stabilization. As well as there were some comments made in regards to some more specifics in the articles as to, you know, specific purposes of that additional funding. I did put some draft language, um, in your packet, um, that talked, that would show you what a separated Article Four would look like, and Articles Four and Five. Um, I did take the liberty of having Town Council review that, and, and he has approved that language as to form. Um, but obviously, how it's presented to town meeting is, is solely up to the Select Board. I'd like to, um, either have one article or two articles.
Yeah.
I would like to have two articles. Because they're two different funding sources, and I think it muddies the water to have both of them together when stabilization is kind of a different bear.
I agree with that. I, I do like the two article, I can't seem to find it in here, but I like the two article approach, um, because it really breaks the funding into the three parts that we're talking about. The budget base is rolled into the budget, so that's clearly there. You see what it is. You see how much of it is, uh, free cash, and you see how much of it's stabilization. And the stabilization part is the part we're gonna be spending, paying back. So that's why I like having that as a separate article. And also, based on the interpretation of, um, of the Town Council, the, um, ability to reconsider an article, if we left it all as one, if that failed, he would not wonder if, if reconsideration was appropriate at that point. Because it's not a significant change, it's just a funding source change. He's got a new interpretation of the law.
All right, for a second, I was Zoom, maybe we can just do it on, oh.
Are you on the, oh.
Sorry, the Zoom meeting is-
Yeah.
Did you have Zoom services in the budget?
We do.
We actually do.
We do.
Oh, do you?
Roundabout. Very roundabout.
I don't know why, it said it was idle and it just shut off, so I have no idea how to fix it.
It's had enough of us.
The screen you just had, if you insert this in there, that should pop it back up.
That's what I'm wondering, if I can, if I just say join, will it reopen it?
They haven't.
I've done this so many times, but I've never seen it do this before.
They're watching, well, they're in the room.
I had lost it.
Sorry, sorry, folks.
Would you?
That's funny, probably Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, they're probably in the room.
So we're just gonna give it a minute to try to get Zoom back.
Here we go. Here we go.
And all those times I had to watch, monitor. Oh, yeah.
I don't know why, it went idle. It said it was idle, it just went out.
1980s, we had a full-on mixing work.
Recording in progress.
Awesome.
All right, carry on.
Okay, we're back. We're back, live.
Okay, um, I like the idea of the two articles because of the reason that there's really two different funding sources. Free cash is simple majority. It passes with a simple majority vote. You move on. You don't have to pay it back. Stabilization is a two-thirds majority, and if it passes, we do have to pay it back. So now it's calling it out in two separate articles, two separate conversations, easy way to discuss it. And then we don't have to, if we moved a $938,000 article and it passed with 60%, failed with 60% of the vote, because it included stabilization, we wouldn't be able to get any of those funds into the school. So I like having the voters have the choice that your base budget means you lay off this many positions, reduce this many positions. Your free cash means you've saved this many more. Your stabilization has saved this many more.
Yep.
It makes the conversation much, much simpler to have.
And simple is better.
Yes. And then we'll move to, what do we, what do we do that, to table? No.
Defer, no. Defer.
Refer.
Refer.
You refer. I'm only kidding. Like I said, I won't try. So, uh, so I think the three motion, the budget plus the two additional mo- plus the two additional motions are the way to go.
Madam Chair, if the board would like to do that, I'd recommend that you vote to remove Article Four and replace it with Articles Four and Five. That's written in your packet.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to remove Article Four and replace them with Articles Four and Five as written in our packet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove Article Four and replace with Article Four and Five as written in the packet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sorry. Not fast enough. If you'd like to make a comment now, you can, though.
Yeah. We can always reconsider. That's.
We can defer or defer.
Sorry to be late on this, but one of the things that the finance committee discussed last week was putting was having the language. I haven't read what you've drafted, so this could be all irrelevant. The point was, one of the points of the discussion last week was to have controls that when the town, if and when the town received funds, that there were some assurances that 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 the intent would be met. I trust my committee, I trust the select board that the intent would be met. But it was important to us to see if there would be language in the article to show.
I can read the articles if you'd like to read the articles.
Sure.
So this was language, again, that was suggested by Town Council, as there are limits on how restrictive budgetary articles can be for school districts. But let me let me read the articles. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $538,697 for supplemental funding for the school department, said supplemental funding being intended to support special education, education-related services for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023. And then Article Five, and that's a simple majority. Then Article Five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from stabilization fund, the sum of $400,000 for supplemental funding for the school department, said supplemental funding being intended to support special education-related services for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023. Two-thirds vote required.
So the only thing it doesn't say is the is where the money would be paid back. So I think the intent, as you noted, is that if there is state funding received, that goes first to pay back stabilization. So I think from where we're sitting, that is the expectation. I don't know that that can be put into an article.
I don't think that can really easily be placed into the article, because you'd be you'd be basically locking in a future town meeting, which you which you can't do. So essentially, I think the message is being conveyed that that any additional state aid related to this would be used first and foremost to refund the 400,000 for the stabilization account.
Yeah, I wish it could be in the article. But if it can't, I understand you're locking in future town meetings. I think there is a unanimity of agreement, and the school committee is on board with it, too, that I think they'll speak in favor of to that point. I hope they'll speak in favor to that point at town meeting if it comes up and make their point clear.
Other than putting it in the article, is there another way to, you know, to?
Well, the the finance committee can put the intention in their report.
Yeah.
And make that public as part of the report, that the first priority with any additional state aid would be to refund any funds that are utilized from stabilization.
I think we should and would all be out of jobs if that doesn't happen between us and the school committee and the select board. And I, again, there's one of the discussions was, well, what if funding comes in before we have to from the state to to help us bridge the gap? And we've already appropriated funds via these. That was one of the reasons. Now that you've added the language that it's for this, if you don't need it, then you don't necessarily carry through with the appropriation. The fact that you've stated the intent, it's public, in my mind, is sufficient. I'm one of nine people. Thank you.
Okay. That was that was the only thing that you had for us to consider in terms of changes.
That was the only item for the for the warrant.
Okay. All right. Are there any comments or questions?
On?
The warrant.
Yes.
Yes. That was for you.
Thank you.
Just waking you up.
Jim Duffy, 343 Exchange. I guess the question on Article, the school bus article. How many school buses do we own?
I would not feel comfortable answering that question.
School question.
Yeah, I would I would defer that to the school.
My question is really, why six? Why not one a year versus $600,000 in a bad budget year? And when's the last time anybody looked at?
I can answer that part of it a little bit. Not I mean, not the reasoning, but you're renewing the budget. The I'll leave. I'm going to leave it for the school. They can answer that. They meet tomorrow night.
So they meet they they meet every two weeks at seven o'clock in the library at the high school, Millis Middle High School, and they're meeting tomorrow night. I will be there.
Great. I just happen to have it open.
Do you? I'll see you there.
I will. I will say.
Kathy McGinnis and I will see you there.
I will say, just for clear.
I have a fire present. No, that's Wednesday. Never mind.
That is Wednesday night.
For clarification, first of all, I won't be at the school committee. But for clarification, that fund would is not one year, that amount of funding. That would be over a period of years. So whether that be three years or five years, again, I would defer that to the school committee. But those are excellent questions for the school committee and administration on that article.
And if I'm not mistaken, and I might be, but the actual cost of that, the paying of it, is included in their operating budget.
That's correct.
So all this is doing is authorizing them.
It's already in the budget.
It's in their budget. This is just authorizing them to enter into a lease, because they can't well, they can't commit to a lease without town meeting approval.
Yeah. The only reason it's here is because on the state laws, you need a two-thirds vote to borrow in a municipality. And a lease is considered a borrowing.
Okay.
Am I still going to see you tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay.
They should get to know me, too.
You got to spread the love.
Several do.
The consent articles, Article Four. Can somebody explain that to me, please? I'm confused as to what that is, why we need it, what's it really saying? Because I.
So the consent article, the consent agenda, which on what I'm looking at, it's Article Nine, but it has.
It's Article Nine, Item Four.
Yeah, okay. So it has four different things underneath it. And those those items typically don't change. They are the same every single spring annual town meeting.
This wording's there every year?
Yes.
Okay. You're looking at number four under that article?
Under, yeah, Article Nine.
Yeah, for the Community Preservation Fund?
Okay. So I'm just noticing it for the first time.
That's required every year. That's basically sets up their budget for the year.
Okay.
And it's since it's separate from the the regular general operating budget, it has its own article.
Yeah, that's the CPA on the tax side that goes into that.
And you have to take that CPA money and then assign it to housing, to stuff, to each of the different areas.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Open space housing.
Sure. Any other questions on the warrant? No? All right. Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Second.
Are we there?
Before they change him, hurry up.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to close the town meeting warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, we have to vote to approve and sign the warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the warrant.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the May 3, 2023 annual town meeting warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right. So next, we need to vote to approve and sign the 5823 town election warrant.
Make a motion to approve and sign the 5823 town election warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the May 8, 2023 town election warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And folks, that that is it. So Craig?
We make a motion, we adjourn.
What?
Are we doing any liaison?
Oh, it wasn't on here. So no.
Okay, good. Next week.
Next meeting.
Awesome.
I got nothing.
Sorry, Scott.
Score is 0-10, Craig 9.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I got to get some. Oh, I'll get one Wednesday.
Someone's paying attention.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I'll remind you.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Good night, and thank you, Mills Community Media.
I got to go, because it's competition.